It is five forty-eight and time to begin the Compton City Council meeting. Can we please stand for a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance? Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, may we please have the roll call?
Prior to the roll call, can we have a motion to waive the agenda to go to item number...
Do we have to open the agenda first?
No.
Number eighteen.
Okay.
Counselperson Zarita.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Sharie.
Here.
Madam City Clerk, can we go out of the orders? Counselwoman Sharie has a presentation that she would like to do now.
Thank you, madam.
Thank you. You want to tell us what...
Yes. You know, we've been truly blessed with Republic Services as being partners with the city and with the students here within our city. And we have three students here this evening. Their scholarships will be presented to them, and I want to make sure that we took care of that business, madam mayor, madam pro temp, before we move any further in the agenda. And could you please, with the counsel, please join me on the floor?
Thank you.
Good evening. I want to thank Republic Services and Don Harris for actually being such great partners with the city of Compton in supporting our students as they moved on to the next level in their life, which a lot is going off to college, but even in the process of their moving on to jobs. They've been great partners with us, and we really want to ask all of our students, our awardees, to please come forward with their parents, along with Don Harris, is she, I know she's here, I just saw her a few minutes ago. If you guys will all please come forward, thank you. We have three students here, one from each of our high schools that would be receiving a thousand dollar scholarship this evening. And so, I really want to... Our first awardee is Daria Smith, Ms. Smith, and you're from Dominguez High School. Our next awardee is Isaiah Thomas. Oh, here his mom. You know, Isaiah couldn't be here this evening because Isaiah is away, he's in New York. As a matter of fact, he's there earning money, so his mom is here to accept this scholarship for him, so thank you. And our last awardee is Avery Davis. Mr. Davis, thank you. And you're from Centennial High School and Compton High, and Isaiah Thomas is from Compton High School. So again, you guys, please give all of our awardees a round of applause. Thank you. And now, we are going to get together, going to take a group picture, and make sure that all of you guys are in this picture. Mom, students, please. Ms. Harris, before you leave, I really would like to make sure that would any of you guys like to share some information with the audience as to where you guys will be going off to college and everything?
Hi, I'm Daria. I will be attending California State University, Los Angeles, as a biochemistry major to become a doctor.
Hi, my name is Avery Davis, and I will be attending University of Southern California to become a film producer.
Hi, my name is Asia, and on behalf of my son Isaiah, he will be attending Miles University in Fairfield, Alabama.
Thank you. And we most certainly want to give our sponsor, Don Harris, an opportunity to come forth and speak and say a few words.
Thank you. On behalf of Republic Services, I just want to congratulate each and every one of you. Your futures are so bright, and your son's future is so bright. Congratulations to you, proud mom, I wish my son got one, but at any rate, so proud of all of you, and I'm looking forward to hearing great things, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here, and it's actually, I'm a Compton High alumni, so yay Tar Babe, good job. But just want to congratulate you all and keep up the good work, and you'll see, a thousand dollars is really going to come in handy, and we'd like to thank our community partner, Republic, and Don making sure that the program stays here in Compton. So congratulations once again, and good luck, and maybe you guys can keep us posted on your success. Thank you.
Hello. I would just like to say thank you guys for, you know, staying in Compton, staying in school in Compton, and putting all your efforts into your studies. It will take you far, we're really proud of you guys, and we would like to say we're here for you, we're the city, and we're back behind you, and as you can see, we have our community partners here to help you guys along the way. So thank you, God bless you, and continue your studies.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of you.
You're now in the audience comments. Now it's time for audience comments. The non-agenda section provides an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on agenda and non-agenda items. The council is interested in your comments, but is prohibited by state law from taking action on non-listed items on the agenda. Your comments may be taken under consideration, so Robert Ray?
Thank you, Robert Ray Compton. First of all, for a city where fireworks were supposed to be illegal, it was sure noisy last night. Item number two on your agenda, I don't know if it was a misprint, or is this another one of those things where it's a year late, but it says fiscal year sixteen seventeen. As of Saturday, we are now in fiscal year seventeen eighteen. So are we a year late, or was that the wrong budget year posted in item number two? Now, all the rest of my comments are going to be related to the American Red Cross. In the last twelve months, there have been one hundred and seventy-nine disaster calls from the Red Cross to the city of Compton. Most of these were house fires. So I asked the question, is everybody in Compton prepared for a disaster? I think probably most of you are going to say no. So on September twenty-third, at the Compton College, which is a Saturday, there's going to be called a Prepare-a-thon, where all the citizens can come to the college and learn how to prepare themselves and their family for any kind of a disaster. This is being sponsored by the Disaster Prepartness Coalition of Compton. Coalition is a whole bunch of people working together. This is part of the Red Cross, it's the City of Compton Fire Department, Compton College, the Sheriff's Department, Compton Business Chamber, nonprofits, block clubs, a whole bunch of people working together to put this to get on. But we can still use more people to get involved. So if you'd like to help put on this Prepare-a-thon, you can contact Stacy Barnes at our fire department, three ten six oh five five six seven zero. Or if you want to get involved by going through the American Red Cross, you can call Margaret Madonna, five six two four nine zero four thousand. Also, some of you have probably heard, every Monday, I deliver blood from the blood bank to hospitals all over LA County. People would need you to roll up your sleeves and donate some blood. You can go to redcross.org/donate to find out where. We also need drivers to help deliver blood. If you want to drive and help, you can call two one three six one zero six one zero four. Just a few hours once a month would be appreciated. And for those of you who did not get a smoke alarm last May, we're doing it again on October twenty-first. And this is a national event this year, it's called Sound the Alarm. And Red Cross Headquarters has chosen Compton to be the target city for October. There's going to be media here, all kinds of dignitaries, elected people come, and, you know, cameras are going to follow our installation crews around, and if you get your name on the list, and I'm going to have more information on this later, you just might get your house on television on October thirty-first.
Mr. Holyfield?
Good evening to the mayor pro temp, city council staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Benjamin Holyfield, and I've resided in Compton for over fifty-five years, and I am the president of the Compton Business Chamber of Commerce that Mr. Ray was referring to. My concern here today is two or three bull. One is a sign on the ninety-one freeway. If you look at the picture, you'll see the sign in the right-hand corner where it says nineteen eighty-eight, when we did this rendering. It was a two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand dollar sign. My concern is, in case the company that put those big signs up there advertising the shopping center, if they put this little sign that says "Welcome to Compton" or something like that, it's unacceptable. That's number one. That little picture shows there was two signs there. The little one is written by Alameda itself, as you come off the ninety-one, to come in north on Alameda. That's that sign. And you can see on this picture here also, the Compton College Administration, we're getting that college back, as you know. And we want the name restored from the library also. We want the name put back on the library. They have a picture and a plaque inside. We have in Compton a system of taking things away. We take away legacies, and anything else we can get sometime. Now, and then here, we want to talk about entertainment. Our young people need something to do, we need bowling alleys, theaters, we need the things that we used to have. As a matter of fact, on Compton Boulevard, there was two theaters, one on Long Beach in Compton, and one right across the street, and also a drive-in, for those who remember. These are the things that we must have for our young people, an example, we were honoring our young people there, and that's the wonderful thing, I work with the young people in the guard situation every day at the YAL Center, best program in the state. I thought about the young media wanting to be a doctor. I have a niece that's a doctor. Young, on a beauties, living on a beauties near Counselor Zarita, back in those days. She wanted to be a doctor. Today, she's one of the best doctors in this country. She was over the Pentagon, when that plane flew in there, she was on another wing. And now she have a promotion from that, one of the highest position situations in the country, straight out of Compton. And now she have a promotion from that. One of the highest physician situations in the country, straight out of Compton. And these are the things that I'm saying about our young people. All they need is a chance. And I'd also like to know, do we have any, what is our emergency fund? I'm an entrepreneur. I want to know, we're broke, don't we have an emergency fund? If so, how much? And I want to know something else. We operating a business. It should be business, especially when you have no budget situation going on. This place should be packed. We should be taking care of business. Thank you.
Kelly Parker?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Kelly Parker and I'm the chairperson of the Oversight Committee. And the other members are Bruce Boyd, who's the vice chair, Irene Shandell Taylor is the secretary, and Mary Edwards is the treasurer-parliamentarian. A few weeks ago, I heard some concerns expressed by some of the council persons relative to the duties and the responsibilities of the commissioners. In two thousand and sixteen, Commissioner Shandell Taylor compiled a binder, and this is the binder, for each of the council persons. Do each of you have one of these? These were provided to each of you, which include the ordinances and the bylaws for all fifteen committees, boards, and commissions. It is my understanding the mayor and each council person received one of these binders. Oversight has also submitted reports to you indicating the needs and concerns. At our June meeting, we began the process of comparing the ordinance of each committee, board, and commission to their bylaws. If there are no bylaws, then we will provide assistance in developing them. Our committee should have five members, but for the last three years, we've had only four. And we're responsible for monitoring fourteen other boards, committees, and commissions. I'll be happy to provide you with the schedule of the meeting days and times. I believe the members of the boards, committees, and commissions would appreciate your visit so that you would have a firsthand information as to their needs and concerns and what their activities. The Oversight Committee surely looks forward to your visit. We meet the first Monday of each month at five-thirty at the Dollar Height Center. Thank you for listening. I hope we can keep the lines of communication open in order to come to positive solutions. One way you can help us to help you is to allocate funds, Mr. City Manager. Say ten thousand dollars to carry out the proposed activities by the committees, boards, and commissions for the benefit of the residents. The second way you can help is to provide training of the staff to these assigned groups. Our staff person is Kimberly McKenzie, who is well-qualified, efficient, and knowledgeable of the rules and regulations of the city. I would highly recommend her to train the other staff persons. May I finally say, Compton is fortunate to have a group of dedicated men and women serving this community to make it a better place for all of us. Despite the lack of training and funding, we are all doing the best that we can with what we have. Thank you so much.
Barbara Keys?
Good evening. My name is Barbara Keys and I'm speaking on my behalf. I wanted to just chit-chat with you guys for a minute and everybody here that can listen to what I'm about to say. Is that the we, the citizens and me, I think we want a beautiful city, we want cleanliness, we want decent housing for people, we want decent schools, we want parks and places for our youth to go. But when we elect our city officials, we are hoping that you have the same ideas and same vision that we want for the city. Now, if you don't, one or two things need to happen. I don't know, but these are options. I don't know if people have been on here too long or not long enough. But I happened to come from a trip and happened to turn on the TV. I have never watched a city council meeting. And what I saw was people with issues that were personal that was acted out in this city council. I don't want nobody representing me like that. We got to have people who got decency and who respect each other. Don't bring any personal things up here to the city council meeting for us to decide and have to have an opinion about. Because if you want some problems, I got one I can give you and you can see if you can settle it. I don't appreciate the fact that you are making a spectacle out of us, the brown and the black community. It's terrible. Either you've been here too long or not long enough. But I want to see some reactions and the citizens who voted you in there, you need to make these people more accountable so they can all get together and each one of these districts is not District One and District Four and six, it's the city of Compton. And you need to all get together. It's like coming in here seeing nothing but a bunch of hate. Nobody's opening up and we need to be a model city. We need to show the state of California that the Browns and Blacks, the city council, the people who work for the city can get together and do something except pitch up you-know-what. I'm sick of looking at you for doing those types of things and representing me. I don't want nobody rep, I want somebody that's got some class. I want somebody that's got some morals and some standards and some stick-to-itiveness and that you all get together and not come up here with all this, this is me and me and my and all. It isn't yours, it's ours. And I want you to do something about it. Get down or get off. Have a good day.
Thank you. Jesus Angeles?
Good afternoon, council members. It's me, Jesus Angeles, and my wife. I lost my job almost two months ago. I have not money for pay my rent. I lost my house. I need a help. I have not, we have not a place for living. And we have visited several places for looking for help. It's not for, help for others, not for us. We are common persons, but just helping for other kind of persons. Persons with problems, mental problems, addiction problems, but no help for common persons. We need your help, please. Thank you very much.
Yes. We have volunteers of America. Okay, yes. We're going to tell you to talk with them. Thank you. Richard Earl?
Good evening, Richard Earl.
Good evening.
Nine hundred E. Screen, leave.
Good evening.
I'm going to skip down to, I'm sad about things here in this city because there's a lot of things that are affecting all of us right now. I'm just going to go with number eleven. We need to give the veterans what they need. We need to, we need to give those veterans a building. This city doesn't do enough for veterans. You can go to other cities and they have statues, monuments, they have Veterans Days, they have a lot of things for veterans. This city does nothing and it's sad, okay? The budget, we need a budget. Our budget needs to come, it needs to be passed, and it needs to be passed on time. Only thing about the budget is we need line items on our budget so that we know how you're spending the money. We need to have line items stating each and everything that's being spent here in this city. Thank you. Last, I want to talk about a petition that's going around here in our city to put cannabis in our city. Cannabis manufacturer, manufacturing, growing, all the whole nine yards. This is, this thing here is going to tear this city apart. It's going to tear the city apart. And if you look at it and if you read it, the city don't get anything out of it. Five percent on taxes for the cannabis is really nothing. I mean, when you read this thing, this, this thing is a piece of work. It needs to be thrown out and somebody needs to get rid of it. We all, you look at, you go down in there, you look at it, they want to put, they want, it said that they can put shops six hundred feet from the schools. Why don't they just stand out and pass marijuana cigarettes out to the kids? Because kids learn by seeing. Six hundred feet visual up the street, they can see a marijuana shop and they'll be waiting to get there to sell. Why don't, why don't somebody take it upon themselves, I mean, with this city council and, and, and try and eliminate the things that are happening to us here in this city that are really going to hurt us. Marijuana and our cannabis are growing, it's not good for our city. We just, I've been up here a hundred times telling you guys that we don't need to have this thing in our city. And I hope that somebody can do something about it. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I would like for the city attorney to please maybe explain to the community as regards to the, this petition because the process that takes place as far as that petition is concerned so they'll understand what is really going on because the council right now, what our position is, if you can, the position that we are taking right now. So if you can just explain to the community in regards to the process and everything in regards to that, of that particular petition.
To the Mayor Pro Tem Council, there are two ways a measure or initiative can get on the ballot. One is by this dius putting an issue forward. The other is by a, the other is by a petition or signature gathering to put something on the ballot.
Item that was, the item that was just referenced by the prior speaker is going through the petition process. You may have seen signature gatherers or you may have had someone come to your door and ask you to sign a petition. They are trying to get a particular number to have council put an item on the ballot for the community to vote up or down. This current initiative will legalize commercial marijuana uses in the city. Currently, the city has a ban, has an ordinance and a ban which bans commercial marijuana use. And this initiative would overturn that. Right now, the, the city, city officials, my office, city council does not have a position on, on the initiative. It's, it's not timed for that. And it's up for the voters, if asked, to agree or not to have this on the ballot. That's where we are.
Thank you.
So, if the required amount of signatures are gathered, does the council still have to have a majority vote for it to go on the ballot? Are the signatures automatically placed on the ballot?
The signatures place it on the ballot. The council can request a report to understand the impacts of what's being presented. But it's the, but the city would have spoken with the number of signatures to place it on the ballot.
Okay. So, yeah, maybe we should have that to understand.
Yes, we would like that also. Is there anything we can do about the language? Because they did come to my door and it's very deceptive because they say they're doing this on, you know, this is what the city wants, you know, they're doing this on behalf of the citizens to make marijuana better and to make the laws stricter, which people, you know, when you hear the language, you kind of think that, oh, this is going to benefit the city. But it actually is not because there, it doesn't, people, maybe, you know, people don't read it enough. But if you don't read far enough, you just think that you're signing a petition to allow us to have tougher laws because that's what the first thing they say. We're trying to get tougher laws so that it'll be away from the schools. And so, you know, I did, you know, talk with the people that were past, you know, was at my door. But is there anything we can do about the language that there's?
We, we are not involved with the language. It's not a joint effort. It's the language that the petitioners want to present.
And how, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, and how they go out and present it to the community, we have nothing to do with that. They go out and they present it. Unfortunately, the community really need to make sure that they take the time, if possible, to read that petition, read the language for yourself. Make sure that you read it very thoroughly. And maybe just not sign it because they are telling you that it's about tougher laws for which you know that there's a ban already in the city. So I don't understand how much tougher the laws can actually be in regards to that. So that is something I think that you really need to think about when they come to your door and start asking you about signing that petition is that because usually when people are out gathering signatures, they gather signatures and they, the whole thing is to try to convince you to sign it. And so sometimes, all the information that should be given to you is not given to you upfront. So you just need to make sure that, you know, that, you know, you read and ask them if you can read through it. Maybe ask them to come back and not just sign it right away and so that you can get more information so that you can be more informed in regards to that petition. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem? Mr. City Attorney, did you write the measure?
No.
No?
No. Can I say, no?
Well, I, I guess I was misinformed. I was told that the intent was presented to you and you write the wordage of how it goes on the ballot and that's what they're circulating.
The petitioner prepares the notice of intent. The city attorney is required to prepare a summary. I explain, I believe it's within five hundred words of what the notice of intent is saying. But I don't have a involvement at all in what's being presented. I just have the summary.
But is your summary that you gave in five hundred words, is it attached to the petition?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. I'll just caution everyone to please read before you sign anything. Thank you. J.L. Hughes?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I'm going to congratulate you guys how you're working. I'm going to congratulate you guys how you're working on the Compton courthouse out there in the city hall. It looks a lot better. It doesn't look like a third world country anymore and I hope you can keep up the good work. And then there's one more thing. Let's, like they touched on before, what are we going to do with these? Let's, uh, like they touched on before, what are we going to do with these veterans here that have served all wars, and a lot of them still in Compton, that have served every war there is? We don't have anything for them. Let's donate a wall, a building, or something, and take care of them, because they take care of us. And even if the other people don't want to give us the credit, we got to give it to ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Edwards?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Talk to me. All right. I'm here as the executive administrator of Key of Knowledge Community Development Corporation. We perform our services in partnership with Parks and Recs at Tucker Park, 560 West Laurel Street. We've started our summer enrichment program, and this is our fourth year partnering with the city doing services at that park for the youth. Now, we've been servicing youth from six to twelve, but we're going to do something new this year and expand to thirteen to seventeen-year-olds, because we, we want to be able to nurture our young people. And we provide free snacks, lunch, arts and crafts, performing arts. We have our cricket program, self-defense, mentoring, recreational activities, double dutch swimming, and field trips. And we don't just go to regular field trips. We take them to the museum, we take them to, um, oh my God, it's in Long Beach, the aquarium on the Pacific, because we want cultural items for field trips for our young people. And starting tomorrow, we will be having our Southern California Junior Cricket. Most of you know Coach Mustafa. Well, this year, USC want to partner and come in and coach our young people, because cricket is very popular in certain areas. And all of this is going to be done at Tucker Park, and it's absolutely free. We do not charge them, and we have classes for them, we have activities for them, and most of the people say we don't have anything for our youth. Yes, we do, you just got to bring them. Bring your kids, enroll at Tucker Park. Even Walter Tucker comes over every now and then and see how we doing. We're in the third district. Tana has been there, pictures all on the wall. And I appreciate those of you that help support us. And Emma Sharif from the fourth district, I remember she rented a bus so we can go away to San Fernando for international tournament for the cricket. And I tell you, our young people love it. They love it. It's new to them, but they're coming out. But we just want to go on notice that it starts tomorrow from ten to two. So, if you have any children, just bring them over there, register them. They're in a safe nurturing environment, and we have wonderful things for them. And also, during the year, Key of, uh-oh. That's the, the thing, huh? Will we give our turkeys toys, school supplies, you name it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sannetta Farley?
Good evening. To Protem McCoy and the city council, I come to you because, right now, I'm kind of emotional. I moved to Compton in nineteen seventy, and the reason I moved is because I wanted to make a difference. I wanted to serve where there was a need, and God has allowed me to do that. I serve a population right now of young women, and sometimes men, who think they're, who have been manipulated into a lifestyle that is not a, could be better. So, our job is to change their attitude and change their mindset so that they can, uh, be productive citizens. I, well, our organization last Wednesday was selected as the nonprofit of the year from, uh, by, uh, Assembly Gibson. I know that there are many organizations in this community, nonprofit, that probably is better, but I'm so glad he selected us. But it says to me, Sannetta, you and Restoration Divergent Services have a job to do, and we are doing that. So, I came tonight just to kind of show off, uh, because we did receive a resolution, we did go to, um, Sacramento last week, and I'm so grateful to God that he has allowed me to serve. Not because I'm worthy, but because he's God, and he sets everything in, in order. My time is up here. My time is up here. God has confirmed that, Sannetta, you've done your job. And so, I will be leaving in October, but the organization will be there. And so, I pray to you that you take and become an umbrella for these young women who are out on the street. Last week, we participated in a sting, and I think we talked to maybe thirteen or fifteen young ladies. And so, I'm going to show you, because we are very proud of what we have done, our, our resolution. I want to leave two words, and I know my time is up. I thank God for the opportunity to serve, but I also want to leave this with you. It can be anybody's girl, daughter, or son, so think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Sannetta? I just want to take this opportunity, in case I don't see you before you leave, to say goodbye, and I'm going to miss you, and, and thank you for all your service that you've done to the school district, the community, the county, and you have truly been a great pillar in this community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just to let you know, after my husband died, which was two years ago, my do, my children all went to school in Compton and graduated, but they moved to Oklahoma. And so, after my husband died, they said to me, Mom, you can't stay there anymore alone. So, I kept them off two years, but, uh, now I have to go. And God has granted me that freedom, and that's what's so good about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Farley, uh, I really want to say, um, I remember when you first started, and every time I see you, my heart goes out to you, because I know how hard you worked there on the streets there with those young ladies, and how, and your dedication. And I know that you, I, I know what your heart is, and you've done such a magnificent job there. And I really want to thank you, because when I started working, trying to, uh, work with, uh, Judge Goff, you were there, and I was so excited because you, of you being there, and I knew, I'm like, well, she's here, I know I have someone here that's really going to be out here working to help make the changes there on Long Beach Boulevard that is truly, truly needed. So, again, I really want to thank you. You've done a tremendous job for this community. You've done a tremendous job, uh, and I know God is going to continue to bless you. I know that you have to leave, but I'm telling you, uh, my heart just really hurts via that you are leaving, and I'm most certainly, I plan, I know I'm going to see you before you leave in October, okay? I will be seeing you, but I just really wanted to take the time to just say, Ms. Farley, I really appreciate all that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Farley. Charles Davis? Commander Joe Harris?
Good evening. Has the other person said, "Good evening"?
Good evening.
That's what we're talking about. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say congratulations to the ones who retained their seat, and to the, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, my friend Doug. Uh, we're here, once again, just to ask you for your help at the VFW. As you know, our lease is coming up. We've been in this building now for thirty years. And I'm very, very proud to say that we've never asked the city for any support for that building in thirty years' time. These members you see sitting here, and other members, when the roof was leaking, we went in our pockets and we put our money out ourselves, which it didn't fix the problem. Um, we, for the winter, we used body heat, because we had no heat. For the summer, we got big fans in there, because we have no air. And the reason been, because back in the day, to my understanding, the VFW made some, made money. We don't make any money now. We're only open four days a week. And Thursday, if we don't make any money, we don't have any money for the week. So, I, once again, I have to turn to my comrades. Look, we need to pay some bills. We need to do what we need to do. Um, first of all, what, I want to let you guys know, the VFW starts at the post level. Everything else goes up from there. Uh, I'm very, very, uh, pleased and proud to let you guys know that we, uh, for the state of California, we made all state, which means that we did all of the programs we do with the VOD, uh, VOD, Voice of Democracy. That's for grades nine through twelve. To write an essay, well, on the post level, we give them a scholarship. Then it goes from there to the district, and from there to the state of California, and from there to the national, where that person gets thirty thousand dollars. Also, we, yes. Also, we have Patriot Pens. That starts from grades six through eight. We're letting the young kids know that they can rise as well. Write an essay, turn it in, they get to read the essay, and on the post level, we, we give them a little, you know, a little stifling, a little award. And we're hoping that they're going to come from Compton Unified. It's just a lot of things. We support the law enforcement, uh, the firefighters, um, the EMT. We just, it's so many programs we have to qualify for, and, members, I need you guys to stand for me, please. I'm very proud to say, for the national, for the United States, Compton Post is in tenth place for all American posts. We're going to get a stifling, a little bitty something. They only say it's going to be four hundred dollars, but, you know, that's a help. We're going to get a plaque for the city, so we need your help, and just want to say thank you for your help. Thank you.
Larita Davis? Larita Davis? Brooke MacDuffie?
Hello, council.
Hello.
Brooke MacDuffie, third district. I hope everyone had a nice weekend. I'm happy, um, today to see that we are talking about the commissions, because there are some that I have seen and been to, that the appointment for them is like a lifetime membership. And so, I just had a question about that. Um, how long does an application stay active for commission consideration? Because I did put one in about maybe a year ago, so I don't know if that would still count or if I'd have to reapply. Um, a while ago, Councilwoman Sharif talked about a task force for Clean Up the City. Um, however, why not use the Beautification Commission to work with Public Works and the citizens to clean up the city? I think that would be more beneficial and be easier for everyone instead of creating a whole different, uh, entity. Um, also, I wanted to ask if there will be further discussion of the GPS for the public work trucks? I know they were saying before that they were wondering, um, how they were going to track where the trucks are going, since sometimes they go in different cities. Um, next, can you please inform me if trash cans were placed into the budget? Um, people like myself, we do do cleanups, which are, um, you know, nice for the people to come out and volunteer, but they can only be so effective without trash cans around the city. I think there are only two trash cans from Compton to, like, Willowbrook. I could be wrong, but, uh, we should also, uh, so with that being said, we should be able to reach out to the commission, that when we do cleanups, you know, it, it should be a, a easy, um, effect, you know, easy, uh, transition. Uh, lastly, in terms of beautification, I think there should be a discussion of the election signage still around the city. If they don't care about the deposit, I think there should still be something done to remove it, to improve the city, because I know that even now into July, almost August, we're still looking at Vote For Me signs that make our city not look as beautiful as it should be. Uh, thank you guys very much, and I hope to talk to you again.
Bishop LJ Guillory?
Madam Mayor, Protem, and council, it's interesting, because as many of these council meetings as I miss, when I watch them on television, I think to myself, wow. We talked about this three years ago, four years ago, five years ago. I stood here when we had a group of people, uh, stating that they did not want marijuana in the city, and when we had community meetings about it, I tried to explicate that if you all did a monatorium, that the initiative, uh, petition would hit, and more than likely, it would pass. Now, we're in a situation where the initiative is out. There are a lot of people in Compton who want marijuana legal. And at this point, you have people who are, have been on this side where they didn't want it, and then now, all of a sudden, they're meeting with attorneys, and they're involved in it. And then you got dadflies who ran for public office, who used them in this, well, and, and one time, they come to the podium and say they don't want it. Next thing you know, they're inviting people who ran for council to sign a petition. And everybody want to act like they don't know that Mr. Ivy is a part of Teamsters, and this is, this is an organized effort to bring marijuana to Compton. So, I think that we need to, you know, stop playing smart and get smart. Stop allowing people to represent us that are not sharp enough to stop things that we don't want. Now, number one, if Mr. Ivy said that he didn't know they was out getting petitions, but he, he turned it into the clerk's office, then he's not as smart as we thought he was. Number two, if there are people out knocking on doors and lying, there are rules to that. When I did the recall on Gray Davis, we had a specific outline information that we could communicate. If that was outside of what was written in that petition, guess what? That was devalidated. All you need is those people who signed the signature to say, you know what? I don't want my signature on that paperwork, because they said something else. So, when they come to your door, telling them no is not just a good thing to do. Because then when you asked, "Why did you sign it?", you may be able to say, "Because I was lied to." See, it's more than one way to skin a duck. And if somebody is going to make money on bringing drugs into Compton after we say we didn't want it, or at least that's what was said, we didn't want it, people say, you know, dius say, they didn't want it, preacher said he didn't want it, but now that somebody came and gave money, uh, some people want it. Well, make them expose themselves. And if you're doing it for the money, say you're And if you're doing it for the money, say you're doing it for the money, and, and, and get out there and campaign that, you know, you're for sale. But the city is not for sale. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, Mayor?
Yes, Madam.
Well, you know, I think every time it's brought up, it needs to be clarified. And the intent to send a petition, to circulate a petition, went through a process. And so I'm clear, because now I really don't understand the process. Did it start in the clerk's office, or did it start in the city attorney's office?
Madam Mayor, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem, council, petition starts in the clerk's office. And then I have a responsibility to prepare a summary within fifteen days of that happening.
Which is attached to the petition?
Which then becomes attached to the petition.
But then... To Madam Clerk, it's, it's a different process. You don't have to approve it and certify it before it goes off to circulation?
Not, not the petition itself. They just have to, once the city attorney writes his title and summary, it has to be published. And within ten days, the proponent would have to file with my office a copy of the affidavit that they published it. And then, so within those ten days, they can still start circulating.
So how do, how do, where is the proof of, or can you share the proof with me as the date, day one, start date of the petition circulating? Because don't they have, do they have a certain amount of days to gather signatures?
Yes, they have a hundred and eight days to gather the signatures. So once the petition is, or the language is published, and I believe, I personally didn't see it, but over the weekend, the city attorney and I were looking into it, and he did see it published in the Compton Bulletin. So it was published last Wednesday. The paper comes out on Wednesday, so it was in the paper at that point.
So that starts the circulation dates?
That starts the circulation, okay.
So Wednesday, the day it hits the publication is the day it's active?
They have the right to start circulating.
So...
Page seven.
Page what?
Page seven of the bulletin.
Page seven of the...
Oh, page seven of the bulletin. Okay, so, so, but it's circulated with the language that the city attorney prepared? And it's, so what kind of forms do they have? Who gives them the forms to gather the signatures?
Based on the election code, they have specific guidelines that they have to follow, as far as the font and those type of things. And they have to follow that, so. But that part, unlike, unlike recall petitions, have to be approved by the clerk. But the initiative petitions do not.
Are the signatures turned in to the clerk?
Yes.
Thank you. So it doesn't matter whether we have a moratorium, they still have the right to get the petition? That's great, okay. Thank you. Mayor?
Ms. Marjorie Shipp?
Good evening, Mayor Asia Brown, city manager, and the entire council. I'm, I'm really puzzled with this marijuana thing. Someone called me a couple of weeks ago to tell me that they were in District Three collecting signature and had someone been by my home, and I told them, "No." That was the first time I heard of it. But all the problems we, I mean, all the talk, the citizen came up here and said, "We wanted it banned." I want to know if the person that started these signature, is it one of our own here in Compton? So they're just totally disrespecting what the citizens want. They, you know, they're just going to try and do what they want to do. And I think it's sad, because bringing drug in our city is something we do not need. We have a high unemployment rate now. People smoking drug, you go to take a test, if you can't pass the test, you don't get a job. I mean, let's do, it's, it's simple. I don't understand why anybody would want that in our community. We have enough issues here in Compton without having open marijuana sales or whatever they want to do. Okay, the fireworks, we're supposed to have a ban on that. And last night, I felt like I was in Beirut or in a war zone. I mean, it went, it started like really early. You know, it, it frightens the animal. I have a big German Shepherd dog. I had to put him in because he was trying to tear my back door to get in. When are we going to take a stand on fireworks and stop doing them in Compton, all over the city? Maybe we should have a place designated where we can just have the kids go and have fun at a park or something, because it's ridiculous. I mean, our, my backyard this morning looked like, I don't know what. I mean, it was just awful with paper. My pool was a mess, and it's just disgusting. I didn't get to sleep hardly until maybe about 2:30. And you call the Shepherd Department, they're so busy, they don't know what to do. I mean, they're just running all over the place. So I know they had a running night last night. I want to ask about the street repair. I noticed we're doing the infrastructure on Alameda. So is this telling us that we're going to redo Alameda soon, or, or what? I haven't seen any street work being done, maybe, except on Alameda, where the, where the, they're doing the infrastructure. So I'm hoping that, you know, we can start working on some of these streets soon. Mur is, I don't even go down Mur anymore. It's just like, it's crazy, it's so bad. You can't even avoid the potholes, because when you go that side, it's one or two. Then you try to go on the, the right-hand side, and it's even worse. So, and, okay, lastly, I agree with the lady that came up here and said, "When we vote for you, for the people on the D S, we hope that you would represent with integrity and class and respectful." Because I, you know, sometime what I see is very disgusting. So let's get our act together and work together as a group. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shipp. Ms. Lynn Boone?
Lynn Boone, City of Compton. First and foremost, I want to say that the people that are out with that petition, none of them are from Compton. They're all from other cities, and they don't want that done in their city, but they want it done in Compton, to make us pretty much the capital of drug selling. Because it's not just medical, it's recreational, and it's distributing, cultivation, and transportation. So it's pretty much everything. And instead of moving forward where the slaves picked cotton, they want our kids to pick marijuana. So you need to think about it. And if you have signed a petition and you changed your mind, you can call the city clerk, because you can tell her that she wants your name removed. Moving on. Okay, item number thirteen, that loan agreement. I'm, I, I just don't, I don't get it, and I don't understand why it's coming from the city manager's department. But on page eight out of ten, two dash, two point two two two, where it says, "A city may receive repayment for, of the loan without even obtaining consent from the participant, and then a city can also assign that loan to any nonprofit without obtaining approval of the first mortgage lender." Well, in doing that, if you know anything about, kind of like, the loans or whatever, it may involve increasing a participant's home, their house note. And they borrow the money because they're on a fixed income. So I think that number thirteen should be looked at before voted on. Number five, the commissions. I'm so glad this has finally come up, because I think that we should be actually addressing the rotation of it, because there's a lot of people that want to participate on the commissions, and they're not allowed to. The other thing, some of these commissions, they may need to be shut down. You have the Oversight Commission, but if you look, every commission that is listed in the charter, there is someone that's over that commission. Then you have the city clerk, that's actually over all the commissions, that provide whatever the commissions need. And then you have an oversight? I think that's a bit too much, because the thing of it is, is that you are supposed to be the oversight of all the commissions. And what has happened is that it's caused a division here in the city. These commissions, because the commissioners have lost what the real reason is for being a commission, and they think that they should belong to one person, and something should be done about it. But anyway, and then item number fifteen. People, people, people. Item number fifteen, where you want to take the money from Measure P, you want to take the gas tax fund, the neighborhood stabilization funds, and the home program money to pay for outstanding bills and expenditures of last year's budget and the budget before that. What happened to the money when these council members were voting on it, when those items actually came before them? What happened to that money? And then Measure P, if you look at it, it was not allocated to do this. But this is all of just fifteen by itself. And if you look at these invoices, wow.
Thank you, Ms. Boone.
So it needs to be by itself, thank you.
Right, Consent Agenda?
Thank you. Consent items are routine and expected to be non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time, without discussion, unless a council member requests for an item to be removed or discussed.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
The name is not on the list, and we're now past public comments. Madam City Clerk, please sign.
We're at item number five, which is the appointment. We need a designation of the voter delegate for the, or the alternative for the League of California Cities Annual Conference to be held in September thirteenth through the fifteenth, 2017. And I put this item on because the league request, currently, I believe, Councilperson Galvane is the representative, Councilperson McCoy and Mayor Brown are the alternates. So I put it on in case you want to change it. If not, we can leave it the same.
Is there a member of the body that wished to serve as the delegate? No. All right, we'll keep it as is. Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
You're welcome. Also, it's time for our, our rotation of Mayor Pro Tem. And Councilperson McCoy is in position now to be the Mayor Pro Tem for this fiscal year. So if we can get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
And the next item is a list of, I think you have the staff report of the vacancies for the boards and commissions. Also, there's several terms expired June thirtieth of 2017. I will say that all of those commissioners wish to be reappointed, if I need to state it all, but it's kind of detailed in your staff report.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
I would like to ask a question to the city clerk. Is that what if someone is appointed and they're never sworn in? How does that work? And is there any, what's the deadline and everything for, for that person?
If a person is appointed and never sworn, then it comes back to, to council's attention. And council can either ask me to reach out to them once again, or you can remove that person and replace them with someone else.
So I have a letter already been sent out to the person regarding this, asking them to come in and to, to be sworn in?
Which person are you speaking of?
Under the Planning Commission, Delala Gomez.
Yes, a letter, typically, a letter goes out within the week, or the following week of council's appointment. And we ask that individual to come in at their convenience, to be sworn in, and we kind of wait on them. Some people's convenience can be longer than others, but we do ask them to come in. And I believe, I spoke with the Planning Department maybe a couple of weeks ago, because I didn't hear from the individual, and they neither, they haven't either. So I was just kind of trying to see if the commissioner maybe showed up without being sworn, but they haven't had any contact either.
So do we have to wait? If so, is there a certain period of time that we have to wait before we can appoint someone else?
I don't believe so. It's, it's council's decision.
Then I would like to make an appointment this evening to the Planning Commission. That would be Ms. Lily Darden. I believe Ms. Darden had already filled out an application, and we do have an application on file for her requesting to be appointed to the Planning Commission.
I'll second that. Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
I'd like to remove a commissioner. Is this the proper time? I'd like to, I'd like to remove Mary Edwards from the Oversight. Do I replace her at the same time?
Uh, you can.
Do we need a vote?
Well, we need a vote on this to remove, and then it becomes vacant, and then you can make an appointment.
Okay.
So it's moved by Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
And I'd like to appoint Jerry Randall to the Oversight.
Is that with a J?
Uh-huh, J-E-R-R-Y.
Jerry Randall?
Uh-huh.
To the Oversight. Let's remove my Ms. Zarita for a second. Councilperson Zarita, Randall is in the first district, right?
Yes. Is there a second?
I didn't get a second.
Yeah. It's been second.
I didn't hear a second.
A second, a second. I'm sorry.
I didn't hear it.
I didn't hear.
I'm sorry.
Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
So which...
So is there another vacancy in the commission?
I believe there's still another.
Oversight there is. For the Oversight?
Yes.
Yeah, because there's still only four, only four people in the, the third district appointed, yes.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have the report with me, but I put it, I believe I put it in the report of whose appointment it is.
It is.
So it's Councilperson McCoy's appointment?
Yes. Okay.
And I will, um, let's see. That's her.
That's right. LaShawn Kendall.
In fourth district, because I believe...
Third district.
Third district, okay.
Yes.
LaShawn Kendall?
Kendall.
And that's been moved by McCoy, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
I do have, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I do have one question, is that, that I would like to ask the city attorney. Is that if someone is serving on a committee and they, serving on a committee and they have a chance to have a business, a nonprofit, that how, can they be on the, on that commission for dealing with grants and everything? If they are nonprofit receiving money and everything, how does it work?
You're saying they, they receive money from the...
Yeah, so their nonprofit is getting money from the grants department. How can someone, can a person from that organization serve on the Grants Commission? Grants Committee?
I'd have to know the specifics.
Okay, well, then I'd like to get you that information, if you could look into it.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, as I'm looking at my list, a person can only serve on one commission. And currently, Ms. Lily Darden is on federal grants. So if we can have a motion to remove her from the federal grants.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to have her removed from the federal grants and appointed to the planning commission.
So moved. I mean, second, sorry.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Which means that we now have a vacancy on the federal grants advisory board.
Is that by district only?
I don't believe federal grants is by district. Again, it's in your report and I apologize for not having a copy of my own report, but.
I'd like to make an appointment if.
Let's see.
If it's open.
Could you confirm whose appointment that is?
It's open.
It's open?
Okay, well, I'd like to appoint Rodney Andrews.
Right, correct. And so it's moved by councilperson Zarita.
Second.
Seconded by McCoy. Rodney Andrews to the federal grants advisory board.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
And are we making our appointments to the Measure P commission?
Are we ready for that?
If you're ready.
I'm not ready yet.
Okay.
You're ready.
Bring that back.
I want to ask you to bring it back. The applications.
One of the last items within the report, again, there are several terms that have expired on June thirtieth of this year. So I'm not sure if you want to make a reappointment to all in one vote? Or you want to take them by commission? And again, it's listed in your, in your report of all the commissioners. Whose term expired?
It's at the pleasure of the council, I don't mind.
Within your, the staff report, there's a section that explains the terms that have expired June thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
Right.
You can either approve them, reappoint all of them together, or we can take it by commission.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, you said that, my report is actually not attached to the city attorney check. But you said that everyone whose term had expired had sent an interest of serving again?
Yes.
Okay. You notify them when their term is up?
Yes, once, once council asks for this, because a commissioner serves until the council either reappoints them or removes them. So I don't necessarily, when their term expires, but once council asks that the report come back, then I, I'm in contact with them. And again, all of us have shared the interest of wanting to be reappointed.
Because just for clarification for the people, on these commissions, when they're appointed to a four-year term, they don't have to serve the four-year term, they can be removed at any time.
That is correct. They can be removed at the pleasure of the council.
Thank you.
Would I like to make an appointment to the beautification commission?
Okay, there is a vacancy.
Brooke McDuffie.
I second.
Roll call.
And to answer Ms. McDuffie's question, the applications are held for a year. And I think you're right at that year, which is why your name was in the report. Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes. I'd like to, are there three vacancies on the block club commission, is this right?
Yes.
Are they by?
I think, in the report, I don't think they are. On the staff report.
Oh, thank you.
Is block club? So it's not by. She's looking for it. Block club is by district.
Okay.
And Madam Mayor, while we're deciding on whatever we're deciding on, last week I attended the ELC training, the emergency operation training at the fire station on Rosecrans. And one of the things Ms. Barnes brought to my attention is that in the, the council is supposed to designate an alternate or someone to stand in your position in the event of a disaster and you're not available. So I told her that I would mention that so I could actually bring that back when I bring Measure P back, if you want. But I just want you to kind of think of who would, and she asked me to make sure I let you know that that person will not stand in for you as a councilperson up here, just in the event of a disaster, that they would stand in as your alternate, so.
Citizen.
Yes, a citizen from your, from your district is what you would appoint. Each one of you, yes. And of course, the mayor's is at large. So if you can start thinking on the lines of that and when we bring Measure P back. So again, are we going to decide to reappoint the twenty seventeen expired terms? Or do you want me to bring that back?
I'm motioning to.
Well, I would like to find out, there are some people, the names I'm looking at, I really would like to find out if they are still interested in being on that committee. And if they are, then I'd be prepared to make the appointment next.
Well, they did make it known to me that they want, which is why it's in the report.
Okay, so they are interested in staying.
But you know someone specifically and maybe they've changed their minds, but.
Well.
Have listed it in your report.
Yeah. Well, I would, I noticed that Janet Earl is on the beautification committee. I'm just interested, I wonder if she's still interested in staying on the committee.
Again, again, if I've listed their names, it's because they've had a conversation with me that they wanted to be there.
They want to be there, okay, okay.
Yes.
Then fine.
And her name is listed, which she's expressed she would like to stay on.
Okay, then I would like to appoint, reappoint Ms. Earl back to the. Just we're going to reappoint all of them? Okay.
It would be clean that way, but you know, if you want to do individuals, then we can do that.
I'm a motion to appoint all that are interested in serving again.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll bring Measure P back and appointments and the disaster.
I'd like to make one appointment to the block club. I'd like to step in the shared motion for Mary Edwards to serve on the block club commission.
Is there a vacancy on the block club?
There's actually three vacancies on the block club.
I think that, does it have to be done? No, overall, I know that District Four do not have anyone there anymore.
There's two more vacancies, but this is not a commission that, that, correct, it doesn't happen here by district.
Okay, okay. I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
So there's two additional vacancies for the block club commission, yes.
Can I make an appointment? I want to nominate Cynthia Machen.
Machen? Is there a second?
Second.
She lives on Evers Street, Spruiston Evers.
Okay.
Yeah, because I, that's not who I'm, that's not who I'm trying to say. Her daughter Lamika, I mean, Malika used to work for me, she lives on Spruiston Evers. Let me tell you her, I'll tell you her proper.
But it is Cynthia Machen. She, no?
Uh huh, that's not her last name.
Oh.
That lady doesn't live in Compton.
No, she does not.
Mechem?
Uh huh, that's her, yeah.
Mechem? Okay.
Are there any more vacancies on the block?
There will be one after we do this one, yes. So Ms. Edwards would take the term ending in twenty eighteen. Ms. Cynthia will take the term ending in twenty nineteen. And there's a term that's ending in twenty twenty for the next appointment. So there's a motion on the floor for Cynthia Mechem.
Uh huh, it's M A C H E N.
M A C H E.
N, and she's in the first, first district. The other Cynthia is in the fourth district.
Okay. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif. Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Okay, there's one vacancy left on the block club.
I'll leave it open.
Leave it open.
Just in case Galvahn wants to point one person. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay, you're welcome. Item number six, under city manager's report, is a request to schedule a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed substantial amendment to reprogram HUD funds, requesting that hearing be scheduled for July twenty fifth, twenty seventeen at five thirty-five P M.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number seven is a request to schedule a public hearing and appeal of planning commission decision to deny conditional use permit case number two seven eight eight, requesting that hearing for July twenty fifth, twenty seventeen at five forty-five P M.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
City attorneys' reports.
Mayor and city council, city attorney's office is requesting a closed session discussion under conference with legal counsel dealing with existing litigation, Star Indemnity versus City of Compton, Judicat West arbitration pursuant to California Government Code, section five four nine five six point nine eight.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number nine, under unfinished businesses, in ordinance of the city council, City of Compton, amending section four dash fifteen of chapter four of the Compton Municipal Code regarding the first source hiring program for city-funded construction projects in the City of Compton, and this is to waive the reading.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
And on the adoption?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number ten, under unfinished businesses, in ordinance of the city council, City of Compton, amending section two dash twenty-one E of chapter two of the Compton Municipal Code to amend subsections two dash twenty-one E point two sub A and two dash twenty-one E point two sub B, regulating compensation for members of the personnel board, and this is to waive the reading.
So moved.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
And on the adoption?
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Can the manager give a explanation to the people?
Sure, Mr. City Manager, could you give another recap on this item?
Mayor, council, this item was brought before you to change the compensation for the personnel board. The personnel board has a number of hearings that they must attend to, particularly personnel appeals. It's quite burdensome, and so this is to make sure we can retain the most qualified folks on the personnel board. It's a minor increase in the stipend for these members so that we can retain them.
And is the personnel commission by charter?
Yes.
How many commissions we have by charter?
Three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number eleven, under new business, is a resolution of the city council, City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to execute a thirty-year lease agreement between the City of Compton and the veterans of four wars. Compton Post five three nine four for indoor and outdoor spaces at three oh three East Palmer Street.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So I hold the utmost respect for you all. As you know, my father is a veteran of war, and I truly respect you folks that can go out and serve for the country. And you made some comments in your comments about the heat and the air. And I know in the past, I don't know, but I'll say five years, you guys did do some redecorating in there, got some new furniture. But my question is to the city manager, in the event that this item passed tonight, who will do the necessary repairs on the facility?
Mayor, council, this lease agreement puts the onus on the city to take care of those repairs on the structure.
So do we identify some of the major repairs as far as air and heating? And some bathroom upgrades? Did we specify or did we put a dollar amount or?
We didn't put a dollar amount in, but those items have been identified.
And that's in the report?
No, those items are not in the report, but we do, we are aware of what's needed at the facility.
So I'm going to ask for, whether, if it passed tonight, we don't have to wait for it. But since we change administration so often here, I'm going to ask for something in writing to be included, or Mr. City Attorney, you can tell us how we can do that, to go actually do like a walkthrough and do a checklist of some of the necessities that need to be done. And we can attach it to the contract or the lease agreement. So no matter if administration change or government change, it won't affect the agreement. Because right now, it sounds like a verbal agreement.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
In the contract, as I was reading the contract, it did state that the city would have, be responsible for the major repairs for that VFW, and that's something that I really would mean, that I was really interested in because I know there was a lot of things that need to be done there. And it's been a long time coming, and I was happy to see that the city, that that was a part of this, the contract, this part of the agreement and everything that they had, you know, agreed to do that. And so hopefully, we can start moving forward as far as trying to get these things done there at that VFW because it's been, they have been waiting for a long time for it to happen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sharif. And as you stated, those items, maintenance items, restrooms, furnishings, also restroom, just basic upkeep is included in the lease. But I would just like to request for a timeline to be brought back to the council for the repairs with the appropriate estimates so that we can move forward with renovating this space.
All right, we'll identify all the punch list items with a cost estimate, funding source, and then a timeline for getting those done.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
One more, I have one more comment, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree wholeheartedly. Um, I, I agree wholeheartedly. We do need to show more respect for our veterans in our community. And we should work on identifying a wall.
Absolutely.
Um, it may be if it's at the VFW or if it's a wall around City Hall, but, you know, I do think that we need to show more respect to the veterans.
Yeah, I agree. Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I would like to thank, uh, Councilwoman Zarita because it's something that, it came up before. Yeah, and, um, and back in the back, I think if you go back and take a look at it, there's a spot in the back of City Hall. I thought, if you just take a look at it, I think you would probably agree that it would be a, be a really nice place to put that wall back there. If we could at least probably get the, um, the water fa- fall, if we could get that fixed and put the wall back down, yeah, just like for you guys to take a look at it. And it may be something that the council will all kind of agree on and everything because I'm happy that you agree that, and so I said, well, okay, I know the spot, since you agreed to it.
Okay.
Thank you, so I think it would be, I think it would be great to put it back there, so hopefully we can get the city manager to show us the area and to let us know what could be done back there as far as trying to, uh, move forward as far as trying to get, and taking care of getting that done. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
There was also some discussion about it being part of the monument renovation.
I was just gonna say that, yes.
So we have options. We have options. I think it would be a great either place, but more visible at the monument.
At the monument, I agree wholeheartedly. I think it would be appropriate to honor the veterans in the center of the city in a place that people can actually see it. It's highly trafficked, and people can really honor them with a, a service wall. And so I know one of the veterans had came up about a year ago and made that recommendation, and so I just want to support that recommendation made from the VFW for the service wall at the, um, monument, as you said, Councilwoman McCoy. And I think it'll be beautiful and well-received and viewed, um, for generations to come. So if you can just bring both items forward, uh, Mr. City Manager, for the council to consider, and then we can all decide. Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number twelve is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to execute an insurance binder with Aon Risk Insurance Service West, Inc. for renewal of the city's insurance policy portfolio for fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen.
Madam Mayor? Yes, ma'am. Do we need to run the budget first? Oh, I'm not.
Need to move the budget?
Do we need to put the budget first? Yes. Okay. May we have a motion to take the agenda out of order?
Sumo. Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number eighteen. Is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton, adopting the budget for fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen.
Sumo, second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
This is to approve the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, do we have the, um, executive summary in the budget? Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
You wanna read that to the people?
I can read the the item, uh, the item summary as well as the statement of the issue. Summary as follows, the fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen operating budget for the City of Compton is hereby transmitted to the City Council for review and adoption. The estimated revenue supplied by the city controller along with certain special fund balance and enterprise fund retained earnings from prior year surplus revenue and the projected expenditures recommended by the city manager are balanced. Ongoing monitoring of revenues and expenditures will adjust quarterly rather than, uh, mid-year through planned budget reviews. These reviews will be intensive opportunities for citizens, stakeholders, department managers, and management to confer and update the mayor and council. This balanced budget is recommended to the mayor and city council for approval. Statement of the issue, city budget is organized by fund and by department. Citywide expenditure budget, which includes all funds and departments, totals one hundred and ninety-eight million, six hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars. Expenditures are off, offset by citywide revenues totaling one hundred and eighty thou- one hundred and eighty million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight. And is also by the use of available fund balance and retained earnings totaling twenty-three million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand and fifty-four dollars. The citywide budget includes the general fund. The general fund is the fund which provides for the most, for most of the typical public services which the community enjoy, enjoys and rely on, such as law enforcement, fire, parks, recreation, and general city administration. The budget includes proposals that the community development department be reconstituted with the director. The commu- commu- the community development who will oversee planning, building, and safety, and licensing, housing authority, neighborhood services formerly known as Grants Division, uh, in the city manager's office, housing successor and successor agency. Additionally, the water department, public works, park division of the parks and recreation department will be coordinated by an environmental services director. If approved, the ordinance and other required steps will follow the adoption of the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen budget adoption. These organizational changes do not add to the neck, expense of the operating departments under their responsibility. However, there will be operating, uh, economies, uh, based on these revisions. It's crucial to operate the city in the most efficient manner to reduce expense and to increase effectiveness of the collective effort, uh, to serve the Compton citizens. The fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, eighteen proposed budget advances the priorities of the mayor and council and serves as a financial blueprint for the next fiscal year. Also included in this budget is a five-year budget, uh, strategic plan. City's investing in a five-year strategic plan that will involve the mayor and council, community stakeholders, management and department managers, managers in developing consensus on a forward vision for the City of Compton. City manager's office will staff this effort. The strategic plan will seek to build consensus on city goals, targeted objectives, work timeliness, resource identification and optimization, and other matters pri- prioritized by the city council. The strategic plan will have a five-year financial plan including a multi-year budget projection. Department managers will be very involved in meeting with the city council and community stakeholders throughout this process.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Just like to thank, um, city staff, um, for working on this budget for the last six months, for working diligently to prepare and to present a balanced budget on time. Um, and we thank you for your work on this and for working with the council on all of our policy objectives and priorities for this fiscal year. Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number twelve. Again, is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to execute an insurance binder with Aon Risk Insurance Service West, Inc. for the renewal of the city's insurance policy portfolio for fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen.
Sumo, second.
Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, last week, we had a, uh, amendment to the budget, although the budget didn't pass, the amendment passed, where we added sixty thousand dollars, um, to our insurance portfolio to add additional insurance for, um, employment-related claims to go up to two million dollars. Um, just for, um, consistency, I would like to add the sixty thousand to this, um, resolution as well. So that number would be one million, six hundred, eleven thousand, one hundred and three dollars and seven cents. And in section four, account number sixty-four hundred, four two six eight, should read one million, two hundred, seventy-nine thousand, two hundred, thirty-three dollars and seven cents. That's adding sixty thousand dollars to each, um, budget number that had been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Madam City Clerk?
There's a motion on the floor.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number thirteen is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to enter into a loan agreement with Camille Nicholson and Ruby Howe using Neighborhood Stabilization Program funds and establish a purchase order for title three six five in the amount of ninety-four thousand, five hundred dollars to assist in the acquisition of seven one four North Locust Avenue.
Sumo, second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'm just curious, why did this come before the council? They normally don't come before us.
They normally do not, um, Mayor and Council. Um, this was a request, uh, from the Controller's office. You're gonna see more of these, uh, come to you for approval. Uh, this is out, this is the, for those in the audience in the, uh, list on TV, this is the first-time home buyer program um, under NSP funds, Neighborhood Stabilization. So we're gonna bring these to you, um, at the direction of the city controller.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I do have one question on here, is that I've been reading this, um, the information. Is the H.O.M.E. program the same as the, uh, NSP program?
The, the home program, this is all under the same umbrella.
It's all under the same umbrella. So all the funds are in the same, pretty much all come together.
Pretty much, yes.
Not pretty much, I'm, is all the funds together?
This is all the, oh, I'm sorry, Lawrence, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, members of, members of the city council. The, they're all, as the city manager indicated, they're all under the same umbrella of the federal government, essentially HUD funds. Um, there are various programs. The home program is one program. The Neighborhood Stabilization Program is another program, but they're basically all, uh, uh, funds that are provided under HUD.
But this, these particular funds that we're referring to is not coming from the home program, it is coming from the NSP program, is that correct?
The it's coming from the NSP program.
Right.
The Neighborhood Stabilization Program.
Right, so that's why, that's why I just wanna make sure I understood that there was a somewhat of a difference. Because as, as I'm reading this, it's, and they started talking about this other fund, I'm like, okay, now is this the same fund? I know that all of the, all of these funds are federal grants money, but I just wanna make sure I had a clear understanding as to, uh, whether these particular funds are actually coming from and what program these funds was coming from. So these programs, this, these funds right here are actually coming from the NSP program, not the home program.
Correct.
Okay.
And we have three, we have three pots under which we provide these services.
Okay.
So one pot is home funds. Another pot is the NSP, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. And the third pot is from, uh, tax-exempt bond proceeds and the successor, I'm sorry, the housing successor.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number fourteen is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to issue a purchase order to C.W., CDWG to purchase an Enterprise Hewlett-Packett physical vi- viral, viral server in a hundred, in an amount of a hundred thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and twenty-three cents.
Sumo for discussion.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. City Manager, could you just describe the utility of this item for the members of the body?
Uh, in general, this is an upgrade of, we're at the end of life in our current server. Um, and so in order to be able to upgrade, um, and, and bring us closer to, um, current technology, we need to upgrade this server, which is a virtual server. Um, they are a little bit costly, uh, as most IT items are. But we will not be able to move forward, for instance, when we have problems with our Outlook, uh, email system, um, and also protect ourselves from viruses, um, it'll make it pretty much impossible to do so without, uh, our upgrade in this system.
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the question I have is that I'm looking at the, uh, I noticed that they, uh, here they stated it's a hundred and eight. One hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred and eight dollars. And, but they say, uh, it's here under the, uh, in their staff report, it's stated that the C.W., CDWG, their proposal was for eighty-nine thousand. I'm just trying to figure out, what is that difference for?
Madam Mayor?
Please.
Uh, I believe the difference is, uh, software that's needed to accompany the server.
Well, it says here, they, uh, here it says computer software sixty thousand, store purchases forty thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. It comes, that comes to a hundred and eight dollars, but I'm just saying, in their proposal that they submitted, it stated eighty-nine thousand. So which means if that is just the case, well, I'm just reading what I'm seeing. If they actually submit a proposal and we gave them number one because of the pricing that they were giving us, and now we're saying it's a hundred and, over a hundred thousand dollars, then why didn't Connection get it with ninety-seven thousand dollars? Get the, get the, uh.
Council, I'm gonna have Van Wilson, who, um, is the General Services Director, come up and discuss that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
That, uh, difference is about twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. That is the cost of the software. It is the, uh, it's a license fee. It's gonna be the same no matter who, uh, would provide it. So the hardware itself, the physical, the physical box, the server, uh, the CDWG number is in fact the lowest. And so if we would have purchased from, from either of the three companies,
We still have to pay that.
we still would have had that cost.
Yeah, still will have the actual cost of twelve thousand dollars.
You are correct.
Okay, okay, now I understand, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Um, yeah, uh, you know, just one last question. Is it, is it training required to this, or this is just a store? The server?
There's no real training. This is, so Gary Down in IT will, uh, be the installer and do, use it for upgrading, uh, upgrading the entire system. So when we're gonna, uh, once we get the server, we'll be able to, uh, do the licensing and upgrade, um, Outlook and some other parts of the, uh, the data system.
So no training for the employee is required?
There may be some, I think, when you install the new Outlook system, but, um, I don't think it'll be anything very onerous at all. It'll actually make it easier.
Thank you. Yes, Madam Clerk.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number fifteen is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to amend the fiscal year twenty sixteen, seventeen budget to transfer amounts within the general fund, Measure P Fund, Gas Tax Fund, Neighborhood Stabilization Funds, and Home Program Fund to cover outstanding invoices from the current fiscal year and prior fiscal year expenditures and authorize the city manager to issue purchase orders for the vendors listed in Attachment B.
Um, sumo for discussion?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. City Manager, could you just give us an explanation of the funds requested and the sources of funds proposed to be utilized?
So the, the, Mayor, Council, this item was brought before you because as we were preparing the, the budget and when the controller came into office, we realized that, uh, practice of the city had been to hold on to invoices, um, for quite some time and even possibly push some to the next fiscal year. So the controller, um, management as well as the controller, I concurred with her, uh, decision to pay these bills within the current fiscal year. Uh, we, in order to actually, uh, make these payments from the appropriate accounts, uh, the controller identified the account for the payments and brought the item before you. Um, the controller can address, uh, some specifics if you like. I see her making her way up.
Well, I have a question, but my question goes. Well, I have a question, but my question goes back to probably the city manager. I am wondering if that, how do we, uh, what, what, how do we plan to, how do you plan to address this issue as far as, uh, directors and everybody holding these, these invoices until the very end? And, uh, so we got almost a million dollars here that we're trying to pay out now for invoices that's been held over, that's been held back. If they don't have the money, shouldn't, what is the process if you, do they go and buy stuff before they do a, uh, get a PO for it, or how does it work?
So, in some, some instances that was the case, however, this has apparently been a common financial practice in the city for a number of years. And we're trying to prevent that from moving forward in the future, at least as long as this administration is here. I think what happens is when they try to make a purchase or pay a bill, for instance, when the fire department wants to pay Downey, they hold the bill until there's enough money identified in, in the fund account. We'd rather not hold those bills and pay them in the next fiscal year. We'd rather pay them in the current fiscal year. So, we're moving away from that past practice. As far as holding directors accountable, this is just a practice that they've done for a number of years. We're not sure who directed them to do that. We have been told that this was directed by management in the past. For whatever reason, I would imagine, for instance, last year the budget was really underfunded. So, the, as you guys recall, we had to piece together over a million dollars to pay a particular contract. So, I think they were just doing this out of sheer survival for each department.
Just, I, I'm just hoping that we can, that you can make sure that we, they move away from it because there's a lot of money that we're trying to pay out here at the last, at the last minute. And now we're going from all departments to try to get money to pull together to make sure we take care of those things. So, I think it'd be a good practice if there's something that we move away from.
We agree, which is why we're doing this now.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mayor Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
I totally agree with Councilwoman Sharif. And, um, Madam City Controller, if you don't mind, come in to the mic. Because my concerns are just as Councilwoman Sharif's. And you, you, you brought this forward. And I think, I'm not gonna just repeat what has been said about holding departments accountable, but with all your experience, can you give us some suggestions, how to bring some policies forward that checks cannot, invoices cannot be held over a certain amount of time?
We, uh, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, we actually have financial policies and procedures in place that I have recently read thoroughly as far as purchasing and payment of invoices. And so, we could add to that as far as holding invoices, we could add some language to that to have the council approve. But we basically will be going back to a form of centralized purchasing, although we don't have centralized purchasing in place. But it will be our practice, starting now that the budget is approved, that there will be no purchases made unless there is a purchase requisition or a request to purchase in advance. And the departments are all aware of this. Before there's a purchase order issued, and then they will be able to purchase the goods or services after the purchase order is issued. We will check budget, they will not be allowed to go over budget. The reason this came to our attention is because we, in the, on the accounting side of it, are required to accrue back all of the expenditures that were made during a fiscal year. So, regardless of where and when you pay them, we would have to accrue these expenditures back to fiscal year sixteen-seventeen anyway.
So, have we been put on notice by any of these companies for payment? Has anyone sued us? It doesn't include the date on how far these purchases go back or when they were actually made, but to your knowledge, have we been put on notice?
I know that we have received phone calls from some vendors, but we haven't been put any type of legal notice or anything. But yes, there are vendors that are calling for payment.
Okay, well, I'm gonna ask that you bring back our, some suggestions or some avenues in the next sixty days and maybe that you, um, or at least when we come back in September. And, um, maybe between you and the city manager, you all can circulate what Councilwoman McCoy talks about all the time, the policies and procedures to the staff, 'cause maybe some are new, some have forgotten, some never read it. But whatever the case may be, um, this is, like the councilwoman said, a million dollars. These are, this is money that we could've used for projects in this upcoming year. So, I'm gonna suggest that you bring something back so that, that you can help us to help us not let this happen again. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
And could you please, again, Mr. City Manager, put the department managers on notice that this is not something that we want to see coming, coming into the new budget. You know, they need to be more diligent on their, their staff to get those invoices paid because sometimes it's just a matter of staff holding them on their desks. You know, they just play shuffle and they don't, you know, move forward with getting the invoices paid. So, I'm requesting, they have a purchase order, but they don't move forward with the invoice payment. So, that's all my...
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number sixteen is a resolution of City Council, City of Compton, rejecting all street sweeping bids submitted, authorizing the re-advertising of citywide street sweeping services and authorizing the city manager to amend the agreement with clean street sweeping services for citywide street sweeping services in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, eight forty-six.
Some more.
Second.
Discussion? Could you also just give a quick summary, Mr. City Manager, on this item?
Mayor and Council, uh, as you recall, several meetings ago, we went out to bid for a street sweeping contract. Those bids were rejected and we needed to extend the contract for Clean Sweep to keep the, uh, the service going. Those, uh, bids have been revised and we'll be going back out to bid on the street sweeping contracts soon. Until that time, until those contract, those bids come back, we still need to clean the streets. And so, this authorizes us to continue a limited contract with Clean Sweep, Clean Street Sweeping until we can get the bids back and you guys approve a new contract.
Thank you, sir. Any additional discussion?
Um, I, I have one comment, Mayor. I was at, um, probably eight block club parties at District One yesterday. And several of the complaints were the cars are staying parked on streets and the street sweepers are just going around them. And the ticket rider, uh, it's full of ants up here, if you guys see us being fidgety tonight. The car, the cars are not being ticketed. So, can we just kinda do a audit on street sweeping tickets and street sweeping signs? They were over in the first district, can't remember the exact streets, I went to so many yesterday. But, um, Mr. City Manager, can you check into that, please?
Absolutely.
'Cause I believe that the, the ticket rider should follow the street sweeper. I don't believe that the ticket rider should come at ten and then the street sweeper come at two because you really shouldn't be pun, it's not a punishment, it's just to make sure that the street is swept.
You can't, you can't cite the cars after the street sweeper goes by, you have to cite them before.
Before they go by?
Yes.
So, maybe someone need to be out there prodded to the street sweeper.
Or then the, the street sweeper need to follow the ticket rider?
Right.
Just reverse it because it's too far apart. And then, I guess, I don't know, are we lacking, uh, ticket rider, parking ticket riders right now?
Uh, we do have some vacancies. There's a, a couple of folks out on medical. But we also have some issues with signage and things like that. But there are a couple of vacancies right now due to medical reasons.
Okay, well, maybe that has an impact on it too, but just check into it, please.
Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number seventeen is a resolution of City Council, City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to enter into a legal service retainer agreement with Lewis, Brisples, Biscard and Smith LLP.
Some more.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. City Attorney, could you please give us an, uh, just a brief synopsis of this item?
Yes, thank you. Mayor and city council, uh, we had a, an attorney on our panel that has, uh, that has moved to another law firm. What's in the city's best interest is the, the law firm that the attorney moved to has also represented the city through insurance, uh, programs regarding, um, employment law matters. So, the, the law firm's familiar with the, is familiar with the city. Also, the law firm is much larger than the firm the attorney was formerly employed. They have thirty-nine, uh, cities in the U.S. And the billing rate will be the same, uh, for each law firm. So, there's no increase in the rate. And finally, the attorney has a, a couple of matters, including the labor negotiation history to assist current management. So, for, for those reasons, we are requesting the new firm to be, um, added so that the attorney can continue with those open matters.
Okay, thank you.
In this fiscal year.
Can I just ask that the council, that we can schedule a closed session to discuss just where we are with labor negotiations? In general?
You can, yes.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita.
No.
McCoy.
No.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
This is the item to save. I'm sorry.
Item number nineteen, which is approval of warrants, warrant number two-four-zero-one-two-six, June thirteenth, Image Management Services for document imaging in the amount of four thousand, ninety-four dollars and eighteen cents, requested by the city controller. Warrant number two-four-zero-one-eight-seven, June fifteenth, Carnisha Christian for drink station for the Mother's Day event in the amount of three hundred dollars, requested by Parks and Recreation. Warrant number two-four-zero-one-nine-eight, June fifteenth, M Source for voucher booklets in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-one cents, requested by the city clerk. Warrant number two-four-zero-zero-two-three, in, uh, June first, Command International for Security Services at Dollar Height Center in the amount of six thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-five cents, requested by the successor agency. And warrant number two-four-zero-zero-two-four, June first, DMD appraisal for appraisal services rendered for successor agency in the amount of eleven thousand dollars, requested by the successor agency. Total amount of warrant is twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Some more for discussion?
Discussion?
The warrant number two-four-zero-zero-two-three for Command International Security Services at Dollar Height Community Center, can you explain that one?
Mayor and Council, we wanna actually put those before, there's two items on there that should go before the successor agency. That is for, uh, security at the, uh, construction site. And if you look at those invoices, they're in twenty-sixteen. Uh, and that was at the recommendation at the time, uh, Dr. Kofen was at, at the recommendation of the city manager after the end of the construction proj, project.
So, that's coming out of the...
Successor agency.
So, but why are we approving it in council?
It was, it was mistakenly put on, uh, the warrants, and so, we needed to bring it back before the successor agency.
But this is, the council made.
It was a mistake.
So, we need to pull that off?
We need to pull that item off as well as the other successor agency item.
That's the last one, the appraisal services.
Correct.
How do those items make it all the way to roll call?
Any additional discussion?
Uh, Mr. City Manager, how do those items make it all the way to roll call?
They were actually discussed this morning at staff meeting, and we meant to pull them before they got to this point. So, when we got to this point, I was gonna pull the items. So, when we came to discussion, they got pulled.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, any additional discussion? Roll call.
Minus those two, do we need amendment, Mr. City Attorney? To just pull them, or you just pull them, Clerk?
We have a... Can we amend the motion? And a second.
Amend, amend the motion to, um, exclude, um, warrant number two-four-zero-zero-two-three and two-four-zero-zero-two-four. So, we can amend that motion to...
Some more. Second.
Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Yeah, counsel, uh, comments?
Thank you. Councilwoman Zarita?
Um, thank you, Mayor Brown. Not, not much to talk about too much tonight, just, um, glad that we got our budget passed, so everyone can relax. People had rumors all over town that the city was gonna shut down, staff wasn't gonna be paid. So, thank God we came together tonight and passed the budget. And I just have, um, a question. Mr. City Manager, does the Measure P one-cent sales tax apply to real estate purchases?
Real, sales, no.
Sales?
No.
Real estate sales?
It's like, yeah, you don't have a sales tax on buying a house like that.
Okay. Thank you for that, that's good news. And then, one other question, um, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
If you don't mind, can you, I, I meant to ask you, can you tell me the, the verification process for the signatures on the marijuana petition?
The verification process, they will, um, um, once I determine that we have enough signatures, then they'll go down to the registered recorders' office, uh, to be verified.
And then, one other question. A citizen said at the podium tonight that if someone wanted their name to be removed from the petition, can they do that?
You can do that, um, prior to the, um, petition being turned in. You'd have to, you, they would have to submit a letter stating that they want their name withdrawn, but it has to be prior to the, uh, petition being turned in.
Submitted to?
The clerk's office.
The Compton Clerk's office?
Right.
Your office?
Right. And then, we will remove them at that point. But if they try and say they want it, uh, removed and the signatures have already been turned in, it, it can't be removed.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And, um, you know, like I said a minute ago, I went to several block club meetings yesterday. I was, it was some people out yesterday, um, celebrating Fourth of July. And it was a very, other than the normal illegal fireworks, it was a very quiet evening in the city of Compton. And like I said, people were, I was downtown for a little while last night and coming back on the Harbor Freeway. I mean, it was fireworks everywhere, all, all the way from north to south. And, um, hopefully, this year we'll work on, um, talking, discussing the fire, discussing the fireworks in the city of Compton. But to all the block clubs in District One, I just wanna commend you, congratulate you, and thank you, most of all, for inviting me. And, you know, the hardest thing about visiting all those block clubs is the food, and I have no willpower. And I mean, it was some food out there yesterday from Tekey homemade, Taquitos, burgers, hot links, peach cobbler, you name it, grandma salsa. I mean, it, and I can't say no, you know, so it was good and I had a good time. And just wanna thank everybody for being safe and being sane. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy?
Few announcements, I have a, um, town hall meeting Thursday...
Few announcements, I have a Town Hall meeting Thursday, July thirteenth, at six p.m. at Burrell McDonald Park. Also, I am planning for a movie in the park on August fourth at Burrell McDonald Park, and on July twenty-second, I will have a Community Gardens grand opening at Tucker Park. So those are a few of the activities that we have upcoming, and I will be distributing more information on the events. Also, I would like to thank Gilda Blueford, who hosted a event on July first for, it was in honor of Independence Day, but it was with a twist, they had a, a southern twist to it, so we had just a one-block parade, but it was very nice, the block club had set up. They too had food in every, in different households, you could go here and get food. It was a great event, they had a puppet show for the kids, they had all kind of events, and it was a really nice event, she invited the newly elected, everyone that had been elected, and the city attorney and the city clerk were also there. And, Mr. City Manager, looking for a status report on the repairs to Burrell McDonald Park, specifically with the leaking of the roof. I know it's summertime, but we'll be getting back around to rain, so I would like something done before we get back to the rain. And the traffic light, um, I wanna, I want something come back about that, as well as the traffic light on Wilmington and Greenleaf, and then the freeway signs that Mr. Hollyfield has been talking about. And I, that's it, I think I need to adjourn in memory of Giuffredo Archer, which is my grandson's grandfather on his father's side, and Francis Williams, which is my first cousin. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCoy, and congratulations on being appointed mayor pro 10 for this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Sharif?
Again, going back to that petition, um, please, people, read what you're signing, or just don't sign if you don't understand, because they're circulating that petition to bring, make marijuana legal in the city of Compton, and we're doing everything that we can to take our stand and stand firm that we don't want marijuana in the city. So please, 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 read what you're signing, and please don't sign the petition, because that would be a disaster for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sharif?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. The state of California is offering over two hundred million dollars in tax credit to businesses of all sizes. Join senior officials from the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development for a free one-hour business development presentation on Wednesday, July twelfth, two thousand seventeen, from two, from ten-thirty a.m. to eleven-thirty a.m. at Dollar High Community Center, located at three hun, three oh one North Cameron Avenue here in Compton. And I know bef, a while back, people was wondering about what our sales tax was gonna be, and we finally had actually told them, but I actually got the final report from our Board of Equalization, because as of July the first, Measure M did take effect, went into effect. So now the city of Compton's sales tax is at ten point two five percent. I think the community need to know, so this way it's official. Uh, this, I got this notice from the Board of Equalization, so it is official, it's ten point two five. Uh, I will be hosting my quarterly business roundtable for District Four on Wednesday, July the twenty-sixth, uh, from ten a.m. to twelve p.m. at the Dollar High Community Center. This is an opportunity to network with local businesses, meet law enforcement and city staff. A light lunch will be served, remember, businesses are the backbone of our local economy, so please come out and be a part of this, um, business, uh, roundtable. And I'm as, I actually having my second annual senior luau. I will be hosting my second annual senior luau on Thursday, July the twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, at the Dollar High Community Center from eleven a.m. to two p.m. Come out and join us, scrumptious catered meal, entertainment, and lively music. For more information and to reserve a ticket, please contact the staff at the Dollar High Community Center at three one zero six oh five five six eight eight. That's three one zero six oh five five six eight eight. I'm looking forward to having a wonderful time again this year. And on Saturday, July the twenty-ninth, I will be hosting my first Unity Festival from twelve p.m. to four p.m. at Kelly Park, located at twenty-three nineteen East Caldwell Street here in Compton. The Unity Festival is designed to enhance unity and bring healing among the citizens of Compton, and to strengthen relationships between businesses, churches, schools, government, and districts. There will be food, live entertainment, recreation activities, and fellowships, so please come out on July the twenty-ninth and be a part of this event. And, um, the marijuana initiative that's here, that's being, um, passed here in Compton, signature petition is being passed around in Compton, I'm gonna, as my colleagues, I'm going to encourage each of you to please make sure that you take time to read what you are signing. It is important. Once you've signed it, I think the city clerks have also explained to you the process that you will have to go through if you feel that you, uh, that you had, someone had been dishonest with you and you want your name removed, there's a process that you will have to go to, go, go through. So before you even think of signing anything, please make sure that you understand what it is, please understand that you, um, uh, agree with that petition, but I'm asking the community to please do not sign this petition, because we have already passed an ordinance here in this coun, in this city, where it's a ban on marijuana, so we, uh, so we have to, as my colleague said, we have to stand firm, and because, looking at the things that's happening, maybe Compton is not the best place for us to, to do this at this time, this, this is maybe not to be the best time for this city. So therefore, I'm asking you to please be mindful of what you're signing, and make sure that you're reading, and that you understand what is being said to you. Thank you. And I would like to close in memory of Mr. Jim Newman. Mr. Newman was very, very much engaged there in Compton, uh, at the city, Compton High School Basketball, uh, program there some years ago, and I do not have the particulars in regards, at this moment, in regards to his funeral service, but as soon as that information is given to me, I will make sure that it's shared with this, uh, with, with the community. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Brown.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sharif. Just a, a big congratulations to the councils and city staff for approving our budget. Um, this budget includes several highlights, including Measure P, which is the big cornerstone of our budget and moving our city forward. Look forward to the street improvements, all of the cleanliness programs to remove graffiti and clean up trash and really beautify our city. Also, I'm very pleased with centralized purchasing, which has also been one of my goals for the last few years, and then also our strategic plan is, which is also included in the budget. Lastly, also, our Christmas parade is a line item for all of those that did not get a chance to follow all of the budget hearings and proceedings, and I look forward to hearing updates on the major street improvement program that was presented as part of this budget to the council, and, as well as the corresponding timeline, so that we can make sure that we move forward with these street improvement programs as planned, on time, and on schedule. Um, just a quick reminder, um, that we can, we're having our swearing-in, our inauguration ceremony for the majority of the council this Friday, July seventh, at five o'clock p.m. at the Douglas Dollar High Center. It is the community ceremony, it is open to the entire public. Um, of course, everything is free, we welcome you to come and celebrate and to hear from your elected representatives, what you can expect to see over the next four years, as well as the direction that the city is going collectively with unified leadership. So I encourage everyone to come out. It is going to be warm, so dress accordingly, and we look forward to seeing everybody this Friday at five p.m. And we will actually recess. Correct. Um, recess in the memory of all the aforementioned individuals, and I know that we will come and close out the council meeting after a closed session. Thank you all.
Present in closed session was City Council, with the exception of Councilman Galvan. We discussed conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Star and Dimney versus City of Compton, Judicat West arbitration pursuant to California Government Code, Section five four nine five six point nine subsection A. There is one matter to report out, council, by a vote of three affirmative, one abstention from Councilperson Zarita, voted to approve the law firm of Lewis Brisboi Bisgard and Smith LLP to represent the city in regards to the closed session item listed. The other discussion comes under no reportable action taken, and that concludes our report out on this item. Also, before we adjourn, for lack of a quorum, I'd like to say happy birthday to my father, World War II veteran and Korean conflict veteran and pastor, who turned ninety-three today, so...
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And we are now going to adjourn at nine oh two, for lack of a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you.